We'll bring to order a special public hearing for the board to determine the Kennedy budget for this coming school year. I'm going to ask Board Member Golden to lead us all in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. This is a special public hearing on the Kennedy budget for this coming school year. That is the only item of business coming before the board. That's the only item of business for which public comment will be allowed. Any other comments are not allowed. Anybody signed up for something else will have the opportunity in our next school board meeting to speak about something else. Any protest or attempt, you'll be asked to sit down and restrain yourself from that. If that request is not followed, I will be asking for you to be escorted out of this room. Let me make it very clear. This will be a business meeting of the school board. We will insist upon the public respecting it for them. The Chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda amendments on the July 30, 2019, Agenda updated July 30, 2019, updated July 25, 2019, and posted to the District West website. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing for the...
Who approves the agenda?
Okay, yes. Is there a motion to...
Who approves the agenda as amended?
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Hope to approve the agenda. It's been seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there discussion? The Chair hearing none. We'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This motion is approved unanimously, five to zero. At this time, I will open the public hearing for the board to hear public comments regarding and only regarding the 2019-2020 Kennedy budget and millage and answer questions related thereto. I'm going to ask Board Vice Chair Messenger if there are any persons who have signed up for public comment regarding this public hearing on the Kennedy budget and millage.
My understanding is there are some folks that have signed up to speak today. As the Chair has said, the conversation is only today. It's a very special meeting. Today's conversation today is only the tentative budget for 1920 and the tentative millage rate. Those are the only topics that will be spoken today. If there's any other topics that would like to be discussed at a later date, the next regular scheduled board meeting is August 13. So, I understand there's a lot of people that have signed up. Because it's a public hearing, you are not required to sign up. Anyone can speak on these specific topics, which is the budget and the tentative millage rate. So with that, I'm just going to go row by row. If there's someone that would like to speak on those two topics in the second row, so that's Norm, would you like to come up and speak? I think you know the routine.
Routine, okay. Welcome. I'm Norm Nelson, a citizen, and I'm here to talk about the budget, which they're passing out. It's happened to be a cover of red. For the people that are watching, it's called lies. If you look at the page, it's only 14 pages, and I've got three minutes. What I'm calling is wrong. If you look at page two of this, and I've got it numbered, it says, and this is copies of your numbers and your printout, it says, what is your budget for this coming year? Is it 800 and it's 768 million, 517, 364? That's a lie. If you look at my first sheet underneath there, it's number one, which shows for four years you've been doing this. And it also shows my understanding of word lies. Make a statement that knows is false and what you try to deceive. My spreadsheet, which you'll see on page two, is all I did was take numbers off of your budget pages, created, added them up, and wondered where you got the 68 million from. Because if you look at my sheet, it shows you all the funds. I assume you've got all the funds. You've got four of them: general debt, capital projects, and special revenue funds. If you look at those individual pages and add them up, and that's line 138, and also you have to add the beginning balance, you're only going to have 724 million. 724 million. Now where you get 768 is beyond a wonder. So what I did is down on the next line, down to 142, I took the numbers off your sheet. And I said, oh, under general fund and debt service, there's $43 million off that you said you took from capital funds. Well, if you look in colors, it's color-coded. If you look what's color-coded, you counted that money twice, twenties. You exaggerated the budget that much. That's lying. That's lying. You don't have it. If you could further confirm that, I looked, this is four years' history, and those pages are attached if you want to look up the numbers. If you look at pages 11 and 12, that's two years that we have CAFRs for. Now I've got a special printout on it, my original spreadsheet, added what the CAFR tells you at the end of the year. They said, this has been on page 11, it shows, yeah, this is page 12 I'm looking at, page 12. Total revenue for the year on a CAFR, 582. What did your budget page say? So I'm going to start with 625.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go with the next row, the third row. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the budget?
I have a question, Madam Vice Chair, because I was asked and I can't answer it. In the past, didn't we allow public comments at even these meetings?
As far as I know, this type of meeting does not have a public comment section because it is specifically a public hearing and because it is specifically on these specific topics. So I don't know how many times I can say specifically in a sentence, but because of that, it is only on these topics. It is not a regularly scheduled meeting, it is a special meeting.
Disappointing, that's two meetings they haven't been allowed to talk, but I'm ready to talk budget. I'd like to start off by asking some budget questions about...
Excuse me, did he identify himself on the record?
Please, I'm sorry. That is, please identify yourself for the record.
Ed Hunley. May I begin?
You're already going.
Yeah, I'm ready. I want to talk about the budget as it pertains to Lincoln Memorial Academy.
I'm sorry, you're not going to be allowed to comment on that. Lincoln Memorial Academy is not part of this budget.
Lincoln Memorial Academy is not part of the school board's budget.
That's correct, sir. If there's anybody, if there's no comments from the audience, you're going to be asked to leave. Okay. You've heard what I said. One more time and you'll be escorted out. Then get an ear... One more time you speak up from the audience like that, you'll be escorted out of this meeting.
I'm curious as to the impact on the 2019-20 budget for any school that has their enrollment stopped and has their students unenrolled when we know that enrollment is a big factor when Survey Two comes around and they're counted towards the revenues for that school. So I'm asking if we're going to continue that practice of not allowing any school to enroll students past their projection because projections do not serve as caps. I'm also asking if a pending budgetary investigation for any school regarding title funds that may have been due them that has been going on for a couple of months will be resolved prior to the approval of this budget for any school in particular. And because there may be some other schools concerned, are financial shortfalls that may be identified at the end of this budget grounds for actions against the school? Or is it just that they would have to follow the statute that says the board and the sponsor will develop a corrective action plan and file it with the Commissioner within 30 days? Or if the governing board and sponsor are unable to agree on a corrective action?
I don't see how this pertains to the budget anymore.
I'm asking about, financials don't pertain to the budget?
Sure, they do, but I don't see how that specific item pertains to this budget. What's coming before us today does not have a breakdown of schools in it, does not have a breakdown of any of that in it. All it has is a percentage for charter schools. That is what is in what we're looking at today. It does not, the final budget might have those breakdowns.
Ma'am, I'm sorry you didn't say, I didn't say...
No, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Well, yes, it's clear.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're not, you've been advised, you're not going, the clock should be ticking right now.
It can't tick while you're talking. I'm not being...
I'm sorry, this is your time and you're using it by wandering away. Mr. Hunley, you've been advised, if you're going to continue with this, your time will be up very quick.
You're using up my time.
Well, I'm sorry. You advise, you follow the rules and this won't happen.
I just need a point of clarification.
If you have a comment, make your comment.
I can ask you a question, sir?
No, you can't, not right at this moment. Not about what the rules that have been explained to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the third row that would like to come up and speak specifically about the budget and the tentative millage?
Yeah, but let me tell you all something. Y'all need to be, Rodney Jones, that would be me, and Mr. Minor, and board members and staff, I just want to caution you, and I'm going to caution you too, Jeanette, y'all are finding, threading a fine line on bridging people's First Amendment freedom of speech. So I caution you that you might want to consult with...
I would recommend that we talk about the budget.
I know, but before I'm interrupted, like everybody else says, let me make something clear to you.
Okay.
I'm not going to sit down.
You have the right to comment regarding the budget. Sitting up here and making threats, you're going to be asked to leave.
Y'all keep interrupting. You're bridging people's freedom of speech.
No, we're not. Officer, this man doesn't want to make...
Call him up if you want to. I'm not going anywhere till my three minutes are up. I'm entitled.
No, if you're not going to talk, if you're going to argue with him, okay.
Come on, man.
Now Rodney?
I've got my three minutes.
No, this is an open forum.
They put you in a bad spot, bro, man. I know I'm not, and I'm not going anywhere. Easy to tell by three minutes up. I'm not going. I'm not going. He can't dictate...
Yes, ma'am.
I've got three minutes. I've got three minutes, bro. I haven't broken the law. Tell me, have I broken the law? Tell me, have I broken the law?
We're in recess for five minutes.
Have I broken the law? Tell me, have I broken the law?
If you don't believe, you will.
Nobody, he can't...
My man already pointed on that. Had a whole nother thing, but... Is my wife? She's not in here, okay? I apologize. I had a bunch of other things, but I guess I just wasted time like y'all did my check.
Is there anyone else in the third row that would like to speak? Okay, fourth row, anyone that would like to speak? That, I believe, is the fourth row.
Good afternoon. My name is Arthur Huggins.
What's the last name, please?
I do understand that...
Restate your last name. I'm sorry she didn't hear you. For the record.
Arthur, A-R-T-H-U-R, Huggins, H-U-G-G-I-N-S.
Thank you.
I understand that this meeting is about budget. I do have a budget question concerning, I heard Mrs. Saunders speak on last Thursday, making a commitment to making sure some of the LMA workers were actually paid, but it seemed like a broken promise coming from the school board. And really, this just dismantles me with the whole school board as far as trust level.
We're speaking only about the budget that's before us today, the tentative budget.
Well, let me ask you this question. Is there some information I could find on what is supposed to be said? Is it mandatory that you only speak specifically? And there again, I don't know what are the specifics. When you say financials, what's the limit? How do we know as the public what you want out of us when it comes to finance? There's no guide. So, and is there a statutory booklet somewhere we can actually read where it's telling us that we can't go outside when it's time for public comment? Where is the statutory on that? Can anybody help?
This is a hearing, it's specific to this item only.
Yes, ma'am, but I'm not understanding...
And this item is publicly posted, and it has been for a week. This is the budget, it is posted online.
Right. But I'm asking you, where is it that I could find the statutory that states that there's no other comment that can be made? And I read this, man, I came here last week and I spoke to you personally, and I said there was no opportunity for me to sign up about the situation last week. There was no, so I'm asking for information.
This is only about the budget. This is only about the budget, not about last week.
I perfectly understand. I'm asking now for information if someone, if you can direct me, someone can help me, anyone can help me. Anyone. Anybody?
166.041.
1...
66.041.
Okay, thank you so much. I just want to add that what you're doing is only adding to the hurt of the community here.
This is only about the budget.
My name is Betty Sales Rose. This is about the budget. This is my story, this is my song. Okay, I look at the agenda today, Mr. Minor, and I see, the only thing I see up here, what you all had... you all had on the budget, it tended to what you all supposed to vote on. You don't have none where I can see what to talk about anything. Could you tell me why? I don't see it. I look it up on my phone if you want us to talk about the budget. And I know everybody's quiet here, but I'm just saying, I'm for what is right. So, Mr. Minor? Well, I'll just stand up here till my three minutes is up. That's the way I am. And no disrespect to you, but... Yes. Okay, Manatee County, you know what you must do now. You cannot sit down and take this non-mouth from this board, because one thing I know for fact...
This meeting is only about the tentative budget and the tentative millage rate.
Well, when you had your time, you voted for Parrish State. It wasn't?
This meeting is only about the tentative budget and the tentative millage rate.
Well, like I told you, you bought Parrish back up and the lawyer did it for you for six months. It was North River High School and you changed it where you live at. I don't care what it for. I say I'm gonna stand up here till 1:17, I ain't saying nothing. I'm just looking at you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion?
No, not at this time. This lady's not a time to speak if she wished to.
But if she's finished speaking, maybe...
She, we don't know. This is her time.
I'm through. I can't think about nothing else. I'm just waiting for 30, 29 till it calms down.
This is your time.
No, it's only about the budget. And I say, I look at my phone and I ain't see anything, just saw numbers, nothing much to talk about on the budget.
Also, 1,001.372.
Okay, y'all were here for me at another day.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak from the fourth row? Come on down. Please state your name for the record.
Joshua Issa. I would just like to ask a question regarding the district's newfound financial obligations to Lincoln Memorial, because I was promised clarity in the last coming days, but each day presents itself with more confusion. So, I just wanted to ask, and even today, when you said that Lincoln Memorial isn't in this budget, are there any immediate plans to amend the budget to include items that act in the best interest of students at Lincoln Memorial? For example, paying for a curriculum.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. You said paying for a what?
Any items to pay for the students, the best interest of the students at Lincoln.
And you said, for example?
A curriculum.
Oh, okay.
No answers. This is coming from someone that is working at the school, trying to prepare themselves for the school year, and can't, because I have no idea what you would like us to teach our students.
This is only about the tentative budget and the tentative millage rate.
Well, you said we can ask questions, and I asked questions about, are you guys going to do anything about the budget to include something for the curriculum?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I know that we're a little bit out of order, but related to the budget, every board meeting, well, once a month during a board meeting, we will do budget amendments. That is...
You could've said that.
Once a month.
It's only my second meeting, so you could've answered that question.
The policy says we're not supposed to answer back.
He did.
He did. He's a...
He was out of order.
I violated our bylaws.
You're out of order.
Is there anyone else from the fourth row? I think you're in the fifth row, Mr. Hoover, and I see you can't wait. Come on down. Bet you are.
You're in Hoover. Good evening, board, staff, attorneys, superintendent. Mr. Nelson has been coming before this board for six years now, and for the last five, he's been bringing up an item to you. He calls it a lie. I don't think I'd be that strong. I'd probably label it more of a lack of understanding and lack of knowledge. And your agenda says it's a public hearing about the 2019-20 tentative budget. What is a budget? A budget is an estimate of your income and expenses for a specific period of time. So, he says at 7:24, you guys say at 7:68. What's the right number? Has anyone taken the time to address Mr. Nelson's concern? Because he happens to be right. And it's all about communication to the public. Why not communicate what the actual budget is? That's all he's asking for. He's been a gentleman for many years. But it's pretty simple. If you have a checking account and a savings account, and let's just say you have in your checking account, you have $7, and you have $3 in your savings account, that equals $10. If you move $2 over here, and now you have two additional dollars, $9 over here, only one here, but you guys say that that's $12. It doesn't add up. The math is wrong. So, why not communicate the budget correctly so the public can understand what it is? And again, I don't think you guys are deliberately doing it. I just think there's a lack of knowledge and a lack of understanding. On page two, on the executive summary, at the very top, first paragraph, it says, "For the fifth consecutive year, the district anticipates ending 2018-19 with a positive fund balance of $22.6 million." And then if you go down to "We are financially sound," the first bullet point talks about 2012-13, the fund balance was $14 million. And then it says it went to $30 million at the end of 2017-18 school year. Well, it should've continued on to say to $22.6 million for 2018-19. So, again, it's all about the way you present information to the public. It makes it look like you went up from a fund balance of $14 million to $30 million, but really, it's back down to $22 million. And that's a perfect example where I think better communication with this board and the public. And one week ago, you guys added something to the budget, or to the agenda, and Mr. Hunley should've been allowed to speak, Mr. Minor. That was where your mistake was.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the fifth row that would like to come up and speak on the tentative budget and the tentative millage rate? Okay, is there anyone from the sixth row that would like to come up and speak about the tentative budget and the tentative millage rate? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Merlina Parrm.
Did you hear that? Okay, I didn't hear it either. Can you say it one more time?
Merlina Parrm. Parrm.
Can you spell that? Sounds like she can't quite hear it.
Which one?
The last name?
It's P-A-R-H-M.
Thank you.
I guess I'm looking at this worksheet that's tentative for today's meeting for the budget. And as Ms. Beddellou says, it does say that there's a meeting for the budget, but there really isn't anything that we're supposed to go off to ask questions about the budget. So... What am I supposed to ask you about said budget?
Can you turn? I'm just curious what you're looking at. That's the PowerPoint.
The workshop.
That's the PowerPoint that Heather's gonna show.
I was just curious what you had.
Ms. Saunders? Mr. Dye? Mr. Hope? Mr. Golden? Mr. Minor? Ms. Messenger? Mr. Kennedy? Ms. Yost? Mr. Wagner? Anybody? Any answers, please? Just curious. Minutes passed. No answers? I mean, that's what we're here for. We just want to know. I don't know how to watch my own. Well, again, my name is Merlina Parrm, and I stand for LMA.
Is there... I'm sorry, there's no clapping or booing during public comment. Is there anyone else that would like to come and make a comment that's in the fifth row? That's like the second to last row? All right? Anyone in the very last row that would like to come and make a public comment specific to our tentative budget or tentative millage rate? Anyone else? Come on down. Please state your name for the record.
Linda Grison. G-R-I-S-O-N. This is contained into the budget. How can anybody come up and present themselves to ask a question? And you all looking at us like we're crazy. You're looking dumbfounded, like you have nothing to say, and we're supposed to read your minds? What we supposed to do? You're not answering the questions. What's the problem? Mr. Golden?
Since you've asked me, I'm gonna answer.
Excuse me?
I said, since you've asked... I'm your out of order, sir.
Since you've asked me a question...
You're out of order, board member Golden.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, we're gonna be in recess.
Wow. So, that's it? So that's it?
Soon. Yeah, the public hearing. And there's, uh, it appears to be forty-two seconds left on your time.
Alright. Reverend Golden?
No, we're not going to have Q and A.
Well, he was finna answer the question.
We're not going to have Q and A, ma'am. Your time is gone.
Hold on just a minute.
Excuse me?
Hold on just a minute.
Yes.
Now, Mr. Chair, the Vice Chair, who is presiding over this, has said that we do not have, um, in this setting, public comment as we would have in a regular meeting. The rules under the regular meeting say that we may not answer. And that is true. We don't have to, and we may not. Apparently, in this setting, the Chair has determined that we cannot answer. And I am going to ask by motion of the Board that we do two things. One, that we allow the presentation, because all of these questions that come up about the budget, we have not been able to answer because we have not heard the presentation of the person that prepared the budget. The person that prepared the budget. Now, this is just not something that I'm saying for effect. I'm trying to make a difference here. We have not heard from the person that prepared the budget for us. So we don't know any more than you know about the particulars of the budget, including the representations made by the gentleman that spoke first that gave us this document. Alright? And so my motion will be that we amend our agenda to allow the presentation from our CFO and from our Director of Budget. And maybe after that, we will be able to more intelligently answer questions instead of sitting here just looking at each other with hostile eyes
Right.
and hard hearts.
That makes sense.
So that is, that's the motion in the middle of your comments that I'm prepared to make. I don't know whether I'll get a second, and I'm certainly not sure whether it will be approved. But that is the motion that I'm making in an effort to get us, the Board, and the community together to try to deal with this very important topic, which is the budget.
Reverend Golden, I will second for the sake of a brief discussion on your.
I don't care why you second. If you second it, fine. And all, that's correct.
Hey ma'am, your time is up.
Alright, thank you so much, Reverend Golden.
Is there anyone else that would like to have public comment? On the tentative budget or the tentative millage rate?
Okay. Okay. The Chair will now close the public hearing. And...
Mr. Chair, we have a motion on the floor.
Public hearing is closed.
We had a motion on the floor before you just gavelled the hearing to a close.
Let's ask the attorney.
It's a public hearing, we don't take action in a public hearing. He needs to close the public hearing in order to take action on a motion.
But I'm, I'm asking for a motion that impacts the conduct of the public hearing. In fact, this motion, or this action should have been taken for, and had it happened, a lot of the questions that quote were raised about the budget might have been answered. But we're just sitting in.
The, uh, okay.
And we're sitting here pretending we don't like.
Board Member Golden, the, I'm sorry, you were very much out of order.
Call the question.
And, uh, I, I think it stems from maybe not as much familiarity as some, maybe, maybe some of the other Board members. If the public has questions and they wish to have regarding a topic at a public hearing, this is an opportunity to provide those questions. It's not one to come up and ask us to provide the questions. During, after the close of the public hearing in the meeting, the Board members can discuss any and all questions that come up. Also, you know, with staff and say, there's been a question about this, can you help address that? We can discuss among ourselves that question. But to wander off in a Q and A of a Board member and someone in the audience is an invitation for anarchy. And we're not going to have that. And we're not going to have motions about all of that. That is out of order too. And I do think that you have a, your point is that any questions that have been brought up, you know, should be discussed. I'm not going to argue with that, I actually agree with that. It's the people, you know, come up and they have a question, what is the significance of this? Is that too much, is that too little? Is the arithmetic good, is it bad? We've had, you know, a couple speakers saying, gee whiz, they don't like how it's, the numbers come out. Those are legitimate topics and questions for discussion and by staff and by this Board. And that's what we're going to do. So, um...
Mr. Mayor, I still have thirty seconds to address what you just spoke about. I need thirty seconds, that's all.
Well, Mr. Kennedy, I think we ought to move on with this agenda. Do you have a problem with moving on with the agenda? Yes or no?
I disagree with something that you said earlier.
Okay, then.
Thirty seconds to comment on.
Okay, let's go on to, uh, there is, uh, you know, two items of business. Now, in this, these items of, of business.
Out of order, Mr. Chair. Are you really not gonna give me thirty seconds to speak?
I'm gonna give you lots of time, but we're going to do it in orderly fashion, Board Member Kennedy. And I'm gonna ask, is there a motion by anyone here for adoption of the Kennedy millage rate?
Mr. Minor, I'm sorry. Before you do that, we do have to have the presentation by the CFO and the Director of Budget. That is by statute.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Now, will we have our finance people, you know, come up and if you would, explain what we have and please include in your comments some of the questions that were raised, or all of the questions that were raised in public comments. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Minor, Board Members, Superintendent Saunders, staff and community. With me this evening is Stephanie Riviero, she's our Budget Director. And we are here to discuss the statutory requirements we have to with you for the tentative millage. And we are already prepared to answer a few of the questions that have come up this evening because they have come up before. We've addressed them, but we've, we have a new way that hopefully will bring clarity. This evening, we have our, our hearing for the tentative budget. And then, what we're gonna do is discuss our rollback rate, our proposed tentative millage, our proposed tentative budget, the adoption of the tentative millage rates, and then the adoption of the tentative budget. Our budget process with the District is a very long one. We have three more times that we will meet regarding our budget. On August thirteenth, we break down our General Operating Fund to show it to you in detail by object, by function, by cost center, several different ways and views so that you, the Board, may, and the community may understand what goes into that budget. We changed things a few years ago to provide additional clarity. We used to, to discuss it at the tentative hearing, but we wanted to present you with the budget today, which allows us to have the spending authority to continue until our final hearing. Then we will meet in August to discuss the operating workshop and the capital workshop. And then that way, the Board can make a decision with the District for the final budget, which finalizes the process. We are required to run three ads in the newspaper two to five days before our tentative hearing. The information on the slide presented talks about last year's property tax levy, which was two hundred and eighty-four billion dol- million dollars. It's less tax reductions due to the Value Adjustment Board and other assessment changes of thirty-nine million. And our actual property tax levy, which was two hundred and forty-five million. This year's proposed tax levy is two hundred and ninety-seven million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, thousand and five dollars. A portion of this tax levy is required under state law in order for the School Board to receive one hundred and eighty-four million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars in state education grants. This required portion has decreased by seven tenths of a percent and represents approximately five tenths of the proposed property taxes. The reason I am reading all this to you is because I am required to by statute. We must discuss it at the hearing. Our current state required local effort is three point eight eight seven zero mills. Our current year board effort is three point two four eight zero mills. Our current year state rollback rate is three point eight eight nine six mills. And our current year local board rollback rate is two point one four one five mills. The total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate by eighteen point three percent. So what does that mean? Our required local effort this year is scheduled to raise us one hundred and fifty-five million, seven hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-three cents at three point eight eight seven zero mills. Capital outlay millage is at one point five mills and has been set that way for several years. It's explained in our tentative budget book in the section on millage. It will generate sixty million, ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Our discretionary operating mill is point seven four eight zero, and it will generate twenty-nine million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. In addition to those millages that we've had for the last several years, last year we added an additional voted millage of one mill, which we refer to for our referendum. It will generate approximately forty million, sixty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars, creating a total millage of seven point one three five zero, generating two hundred and eighty-five million, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. These are estimates, and when we calculate these, the revenue that we anticipate to be generated, we start with our property tax, and this is at ninety-six percent. We may come in a little higher, we may come in a little lower. This is one of the pieces that Mr. Nelson addressed earlier, and I have a slide to break this down, but our budgeted revenue transfers and fund balances for the General Fund is about four hundred and eighty-seven million dollars. Our expenses and transfers are four hundred and sixty-four million, and our budgeted fund balance is estimated at about twenty-two million. For debt, it's forty million. For our revenue transfers and fund balance, our expenses and transfers are thirty-one million, and our budgeted fund balance is nine million. For capital, our budgeted revenue transfer and fund balance together is one hundred and seventy-seven million, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. Our expenses and transfers are a hundred and forty-one million, four hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. And our budgeted fund balance is set, budgeted at thirty-six million. For special revenue, which is grants and food service, our, um, total budget is sixty-two thou- sixty-two million, eight hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-three. Our expenses and transfers are budgeted at fifty-six million, and our fund balance at six point two million.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Will you entertain questions as we go along?
That's fine.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy's recognized his questions. The Speaker, thank you.
Heather, my first question, excuse me, Ms. Jenkins, my first question is on the first page of your handout. And, um, under last year's levy, B, as in void, was less tax reductions due to Value Adjustment Board and other assessment changes. I'm just curious, and that was a thirty-nine million dollar reduction between assessment changes and the Value Adjustment Board? Do you know, and maybe you don't, I should ask this before the meeting, but, what, what part of that number was Value Adjustment Board related? And what part of that was other assessment changes?
I don't have that broken down for you, but I can contact the property appraiser, and we do receive information from the Value Adjustment Board. But we get that a little, the detail a little later on. But I will get that for you.
Okay. Thank you. And then, Mr. Minor, if I may, I just.
Sure, go ahead.
This is just a comment of praise for the Superintendent and the financial team and everybody involved here, but if you do the math, that, you were maybe about to say this, but if I'm looking, if I'm doing the math on our fund balance correctly, we're at four point six five percent?
It's a little higher.
A little higher? Okay, I just did twenty-two point six million divided by four hundred and eighty-seven million, but anyway, I just want to commend the Superintendent and the District because we are, I think we were over five percent at one point, but this, you know, I just, I just want to get the word, you know, repeat getting the word out, excuse me for spitting, that we are really in finance, we are very financially stable, and I know it keeps getting said over and over again. But, but I just did the math and that jumped out at me, so. Thank you, and great job to Superintendent and staff.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Continue, please. Any other questions for Board Member? Okay.
Slide number six is what we prepared to address the transfers.
Is, okay, is this, is this up on the screen for?
Yes.
I'm not seeing it on that back one, but that's, I guess it's on these, the public can see those. Okay, great, thank you.
So if you go to, um, the budget book is posted online, and it is also, um, the Board has, has copies of that. Within the budget book, we have each fund broken down so that you can see the revenue and expenses that are within those funds. Page eighteen starts the General Fund. And on page eighteen, most of the way down the page, you will see transfers from capital projects of fourteen million, one hundred and thirty thousand. This is one of the things that Mr. Nelson has referred to. So in this slide, we tried to show it a little bit differently to help clarify. So four hundred and eighty-seven million, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars is the budgeted revenue, transfers, and fund balance. You can see that number under total appropriations and expenses. It matches grand total of estimated revenue. So grand total estimated revenue equals budgeted revenue, transfers, and fund balance. Total appropriations and expenses have to equal that number. So revenues must equal expenditures in governmental financial accounting.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Board Member Golden.
The header here says budgeted revenue transfers.
Yes, sir.
When I look at the last column, it says budgeted revenue and fund balance excluding transfers.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would it be more proper to say that these are not budgeted revenue transfers, but these are budgeted revenue, comma, transfers and fund balances?
Yes, sir. It would. That is a grammatical error in our slide, and I.
But it changes the meaning of what we have there. Do you understand what I'm saying?
They are technically revenue transfers, but I understand how, how that first header needs a comma.
Okay, so that it becomes a column that's reflecting our budgeted revenues?
Transfers and fund balance.
Transfers, which is a second, and then fund balances. Those three things compose the total of our funding.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Golden. Yeah, I was, thank you, Board Member Golden, for his comments and his question. Okay.
Um, our next two columns are our budgeted transfers in and our budgeted transfers out. You will see that the revenue, transfers, and fund balance less the transfers equals the amount in the final column. For debt, we have forty million dollars budgeted for our revenues, transfers, and fund balance, and a budgeted transfer in from capital funds. In the capital row, we show our total budget of a hundred and seventy-seven million, and our budgeted transfers out. As you can see, it is not a double accounting of these numbers, it is a transfer out and two transfers in. So the total amount equals. If you were not to make those transfers, those funds would remain in your capital fund, and your bottom line would remain the same. Do all, does anyone have any questions about that?
Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
I actually have a comment about it, and, um, Mr. Nelson has been on this issue, as Mr. Hoover alluded to, Mr. Hoover, Mr. Nelson's been on this issue for a long time.
Yes, sir.
And we, it feels like, I think it's fair to say, we usually have this conversation about this time of year every year. And what it, to me, comes down to is just a difference in opinion on financial reporting. We've never had an audit finding to say that we're doing this wrong. We, no state entity has come and told us to change what we're doing, and I just want to be clear about that. This is, nothing wrong with Mr. Nelson's opinion, but it's just different from the District's opinion on how to report. So I just want to get that out.
Okay, Board Member Kennedy, thank you very much for your comments, as what he says is very true. First, gloss in a sense, it does make sense, but this is the approved way to do it. That's what it comes down to. Thank you. Okay, Board Member Hope.
Yeah, and, and, you know, I think it's important, the CFO mentioned it, and the, the, this helps to clarify what is new revenue versus what are revenues that are being transferred in order to balance the budget. And she made the comment that our, our revenues have to align with our expenditures. And so when we spend those capital dollars, or we spend those dollars for debt service, we are taking them out of these accounts and transferring them into the account for it to be spent. And so I, as I've sat here now through three budget cycles, and the same issue comes up, there's a difference between the accounting in the budget so that we have a balanced budget and the presentation of what is new revenues for the year versus pulling money out of these accounts and making the transfers in order to balance the budget and to align our expending with the revenues. And I think this helps bring some clarity to it. So when we talk about the, the, the budget and the spending, we understand that some of this money is, is left over from bond proceeds that we're spending to finalize the payments for the construction of the new schools and things like that. And so there's, this helps to clarify it. And, and I appreciate that. And, and then the next step is to just have, these are our new revenues, these are our expenses, and these are the transfers in to align with, you know, encumbered expenditures.
And if you look at our individual fund statements, they are separated out that way, so that's a good point. way, so that's a good point.
Thank you, board member Hope.
Also, um, I wanted to say a little bit about the general revenue portion, the capital transfers into the general revenue. Those are for things such as band uniforms, music equipment, school equipment, special school maintenance, project management, charter school capital outlay, property insurance and general school maintenance. The reason that these items are paid for out of the general fund is due to our red book. Um, our red book accounting, all object codes for capitalizable equipment are a, begin with a four-six. We don't have the same object codes in the capital fund per red book accounting to cover these items, however, they are eligible to be capitalized. So the proper process to follow per DOE and governmental accounting again is for us to purchase these items from the general fund and do a transfer from capital. The reason we show you what we estimate that amount to be at the beginning of the year is we want you to know how much capital you have to spend and where your general fund dollars are going and what portion is transferred from another fund. The last slide is discussing-
Excuse me, board, board member, uh, Golden has a question. Okay, why do we have to do it that way?
We have to do it that way because it's prescribed by the red book, which is, the red book is the guideline for educational, Florida education accounting.
So if we were, if we were tropicana, we wouldn't have to do it this-
No, sir, it's, it's in accordance with DOE guidelines, which are in accordance with Florida statute.
Is it just us?
No, it's every school district in the state of Florida.
Okay, so we do this because this is the way we do school business in Florida?
Yes, sir.
So if we are lying, doing it this way, then every school district in Florida is lying.
That would be an appropriate assumption.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, board, board member Golden for, you know, pointing that out.
The last slide will address Mr. Hoover's question. So we've broken down fund balance. We have not closed our eighteen-nineteen fiscal year yet, so we cannot give you an actual fund balance. However, our fund balance is broken up into several different pieces. It's non-spendable, which is inventory on hand, restricted state categoricals, restricted federal funds, MTC also falls into that, manatee technical college funds, assigned encumbrances. Those are, um, projects that we have POs for that will roll into the next year and become part of our fund balance, and then we have assigned projects. That, we also have our unassigned fund balance. In prior years, we had reported our fund balance to you only as unassigned and we pointed that out. We've had requests to clarify. Um, when we moved to our new ERP system, our staff created a new chart of accounts, so finance and budget work together to make sure that these were incorporated and we could break things apart in the budget as well as in our financial statements to show you those. Um, when we began eighteen-nineteen, we budgeted our unassigned ending fund balance at sixteen point four million. Our nineteen-twenty estimate in our budget book is seventeen point eight million. In order to be able to give you the rest of the remaining pieces, we've listed what the seventeen-eighteen categories were. Over the last several years, they tend to be similar. Um, once we close and once we present the final budget to you, we will have this in exact detail. But as Mr. Hoover pointed out, we had a thirty million dollar total fund balance that year. And if we have a twenty-two million dollar total fund balance, that would be because we've expended categorical items. If we have an adoption, there are years that the district may hold instructional materials funding so that we have enough funds to buy those in the next year. Anything that is an encumbrance or a, a federal project at MTC or a categorical, those are, um, re, those are held and then rolled to the next year. When you get into July first, if you expend from those POs, that's where those funds come from. They're held in, as some people like to call them pots, and then we move them out to the budget so that they can be expensed. How the state categorizes and calculates your three percent is from your assigned fund balance and your unassigned fund balance. Um, eighteen, or seventeen-eighteen was five point four-four percent, and we are estimating our eighteen-nineteen ending fund balance to be five point twelve percent, five point one-two, and, um, we feel that this year will be, our estimate is close to five percent as well. So does that help clear up fund balance questions?
That's mine.
Okay, board member Hope.
I have a question on the slide.
Yes, sir.
Can you run through the line items that make up the ending fund balance? Because I've got, it appears, if you'll run through both columns, the eighteen-nineteen ending, what, what, what line items go into that ending fund balance?
So you, items that, total items that go into the ending fund balance, do you want me to go through seventeen-eighteen as well?
Uh, I, I do because I, I, there, there are some numbers missing here, and I'm trying to figure out how you got to the forty million and how you got to the thirty million.
Seventeen-eighteen, you see non-spendable inventory. In eighteen-nineteen, we do not know that number yet.
Right, okay.
So it will, there will be a number there. Historically, it's been between five and seven hundred thousand. It will be somewhere around there, but we don't, don't have that information and did not want to make a guess at it. Our restricted state categoricals, we also are rolling our, our purchase orders this evening, so that will provide us with a number for that. It's presented in seventeen-eighteen because that column came from our final budget that we presented. Restricted federal MTC, it's the same way. As soon as we roll those purchase orders and encumbrances into this year and reconcile in preparation for our AFR, we will have that detail for you. I wanted to present our assigned encumbrances and our assigned projects because those are a little bit easier to estimate. We did duplicate the numbers from seventeen-eighteen because it was close to that. Again, this is just an estimate for illustrative purposes. Um, at our operating workshop on the thirteenth, I hope to have additional information for you, and we will definitely have your final balances on September tenth.
So, so in the eighteen-nineteen, it looks like the sixteen million, four hundred thousand is not included in the thirty million ending fund balance?
No, sir, that was our budgeted unassigned ending fund balance, and the items in blue at the bottom, you, you have unassigned a fifteen point seven, but also two point eight and two million in the assigned encumbrance and assigned projects meld together with that to meet your requirement.
So in the, in the nineteen-twenty on this sheet, what lines make up the total of the forty million?
The assigned encumbrances, the, the assigned projects and the unassigned.
Okay, but if I add-
And there's an error in that because it has picked up the seventeen point eight as well.
Right, okay, so that's where I want to-
And so you can add?
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, so I, I just, I don't want anybody to misinterpret that because there's-
No, sir, it would be, um, eighteen-nineteen.
I know seventeen million dollars when I see it.
It's about twenty, twenty-two point six.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Close to twenty-three.
So you think, we, well, that's not, we don't know yet because we haven't done our year end to what's going to roll forward.
Yes.
Will that change your percentage?
It can.
That, okay, because it's five point one-two, now is that predicated on the forty million?
No, sir, that five point one-two is the sum of the three highlighted blue areas divided by our estimated revenue.
Five hundred percent is based on the twenty-two million exclusive, so this is only a mathematical error.
Yes, sir.
Okay, not a computational error.
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We all set? Okay.
Otherwise, Mr. Hoover's going to accuse me of not having my financial acumen tonight.
All right, no more?
Any more questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for an excellent job. This district has much to be proud of in our finances, it's reflected in the awards we get and reflected in all great amount of work that goes into the making it, you know, precise, and, uh, we're going forward. Okay. Um, okay, the, um, next item is, under new businesses, adoption of a tenancy millage rate.
Mr. Chairman, when would it be appropriate to discuss, uh, a request of the administration around the budget to be prepared for our next meeting? I, I know we're going to, you know, we need to approve the tentative budget, but what should be the process for, for board members, uh, which I'd like to discuss, to, to make a request for some adjustments to the budget in an alternative scenario around millage rates to be discussed at a future meeting?
Well, I, my, my reaction, first reaction to that is, um, this is the time.
Okay.
Uh, I would-
I would agree.
And, um, what, I'd ask, you know, other authorities, the superintendent, if she disagrees with my feeling about that, or if there's some other appropriate time. We do make budget amendments, you know, throughout the year, as you all know. Um, is this a, a good time or a better time or less, uh, good time, uh, you know, to do that? Um, I, I think judging that would depend upon the magnitude of the budget change. Um, I, I say that because, you know, it's been my experience throughout the year, we do make a lot of, you know, changes, but in the scheme of things, you know, with the large amount of this budget, it doesn't have that much effect upon, you know, the bottom line. It's mainly kind of, well, we're reducing this and we're increasing that, and the bottom line, it comes out about the same. Uh, I am inclined to think that, uh, also any other budget changes is more suitable, you know, at another meeting where whatever, you know, proposal that you or any other board member might have, you know, would be on the agenda and the numbers would have been, um, you know, set forth and crunched, you know, ahead of time for board member consideration. Um, and that tonight, based upon the information that has been assembled by finance and the discussion that we've had and the public comment that we have, uh, that we, we go forward with the numbers, you know, presented.
Oh, sure, I'm talking about having a, uh, making a public request of the administration to run a, 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 a different budget scenario for us to discuss when we have that next budget conversation.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think-
I mean, tonight, we have to approve this tentative, but what I'd, I'd like to publicly have that discussion so that staff can be prepared at our next budget meeting.
I think staff is actually doing that right now.
They don't know what I'm going to ask them to do.
Well, I think they have a feeling.
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, maybe not. Uh, okay, board member Golden.
Okay, uh, in keeping with what has been repeated many times here, because I'm new at this, uh, I thought that the discussion tonight was a discussion about a proposed tentative budget.
Right.
Which has been based on certain-
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely correct and it's good for you to point that out.
Okay, but what I'm hearing is that at least one of us now wants to have another discussion between now and our general operating fund workshop or our capital workshop or the final budget hearing on alternative budget processes. And I, the, the question I'm wanting to ask is, in light of the budget process that we've started for this year, what is the urgency for doing that like right now? Are we comparing the two budgets, are we, the two budget mechanisms or the two budget processes? Are we going to substitute one? If we do that, do we have to go back and revote on, so if-
Okay, those are all very good questions. I, I'll give my understanding, uh, and I'm going to look to finance and people, there's other people that are certainly smarter and more versed in these questions than I am, but I think by law, by law, we are required to, at this time, this date, adopt a tenancy, you know, budget. And, uh, that tenancy means that we're not, we're not locked into it for life, but we have to, you know, tell the world, tell our community, uh, this, based upon the information that we have right through this, today, this is what we see, uh, as being the budget going forward for the school district for the year twenty nineteen-twenty. That's my understanding. Now, that doesn't preclude, uh, you know, the, the final budget, and I forget the date, when is the date we're making?
September tenth. September tenth.
Okay, and, um, you know, doing a final budget, and there, we know right now, you know, there's going to be some tweaks, uh, from what was presented, you know, to us. Um, and, but I, I don't know, uh, and please correct me if I'm wrong, um, you know, the, the limits to what we can, uh, make changes in, in the budget on September tenth.
We cannot make any changes to the budget we have to approve this evening, as you've stated, but it was our intention to hold the operating and capital workshops in August to hear your suggestions and your recommended changes, um, so that we could prepare that information, and if the board would like it included, we can include it in the final budget, or if there are things that we need to change, we have the opportunity and the time to change them before September tenth. When we approve the budget on September tenth, that's our, our original budget, but most certainly, as y'all have stated this evening, as we go through the year, we do make budget amendments as things arise or objectives change.
So maybe, I, I'll help this along. Why don't we go ahead and stick with the agenda? I will make my comments during board comments of, so that they have a heads up and the public has a heads up of what, what I'm going to ask staff to prepare.
Okay, you know, that-
That way you can get our business done.
That's proper and, and fair. Uh, and as was stated, we're going to have workshops, uh, next month, you know, to talk about possible changes, which I think is the appropriate time, you know, and place. Um, but, yeah, it, you know, being fair warned in a sense-
Right.
Uh, is fine too, I think. And, uh, any other comments about, uh, you know, this tenancy budget? You know, board member Golden?
Because I, I don't know all that much about budgeting, I'm just, are we talking about changing the relative values that we attach to the total millage that is the foundational number for this budget? Or are we talking about possibly changing amounts in certain categories?
I will be doing both.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And, and, and so the, 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 the question that I have is that all of a sudden, we're going to be talking about changing the way the millage is allocated at this level, can we do that?
I would have to hear Dr. Hope's suggestions.
Okay, all right. So the way to get it to us is through the finance department so that we would have an opportunity to hear what he's proposing and what, and how that impacts what we've already agreed to tonight.
And we most certainly appreciate a heads up so that we can do any calculations you need and you have the material to review.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Um, okay, I think we're ready to go on to new business, and, uh, um, I'm going to ask the superintendent, uh, at this time, if she has a recommendation regarding adoption of a tenancy millage rate.
I recommend the approval to adopt the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty tenancy millage rate of seven point one-three-five.
It's been, it's been moved by board member Kennedy to approve the superintendent's recommendation. I think it's been seconded by board member Golden. Is there discussion? The chair hearing none, the chair will call the question. Uh, all those in favor of approving the motion, approving the superintendent's recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, it's approved four to one with board member Golden, Messenger, Minor and Kennedy voting in favor. Kennedy voting in favor. Board Member Hope's voted nay. Okay, the, the motion is approved. Now, the, the next item of business is adoption of a tenancy budget. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend approval to adopt the 2019-2020 tenancy budget in the amount
It's been moved by Board Member Kennedy. Is there a second?
Yes.
It's been seconded by Board Member Golden to approve the superintendent's recommendation for approving a, a tenancy budget of $768,517,364. Is there discussion?
I'm ready to.
Okay, Board Member, okay, the chair hearing none.
No discussion.
Okay, discussion. Board Member Golden is recognized for discussion.
Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
The budget that you are, the tentative budget that we, that you're proposing that we adopt is predicated on the total millage recommendation that's already been made, and the specific categories in which they have been made?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so if we were to make a substantial change to the budget without changing any of the categories of the millage, would that be acceptable, or would we have to go back and change the millage categories?
Well, here's the deal. The state of Florida sets very specific dates and timelines for our budget to be presented and noticed, and finalized before it's submitted to the Department of Education. So we are on those timelines. If any of that varied, it would be a violation.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Any other comments or questions? The chair hearing none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, the motion is approved four to one, with Board Member Golden, Board Member Kennedy, Vice Chair Messenger, and the Chair, Minor, voting yes, and Board Member Hope's voting no. So it's approved four to one. Okay? We'll move on now to, is there anything else we're supposed to be? Thank you, congratulations, Superintendent.
Nice work.
The, it's time for board comments, and, but, if there's, why don't we, we don't have an order on here, but why don't we start with, go down the line here. Board Member Kennedy, do you have some comments you'd like to share with us at this time?
I do. I, we'll go back to the point I wanted to, or the point of order I had earlier, which could have waited, so I apologize for my impatience there. But I just want to pull up the, the verbiage that the vice chair reads every time we have public comment, states the following in the last sentence. "The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items and so forth." It doesn't say we are prohibited from, it just says usually we won't respond. So I think if Reverend Golden or anyone else wanted to answer our question, we as board members certainly have that right in our bylaws. Next, Mr. Chairman, I owe you an apology, and I would like to correct the record right now, as soon as I pull this up. I made a comment at the last board meeting about you having chainsaws at the podium, and you said to me that that was not true, that was a fabrication, I think was the word that you used. So, thinking I might be crazy, I went back to find it, and sure enough, you are correct, sir, and I apologize for misstating the facts. I won't read you the whole article, but this is from January 27, 2009, Sarasota Herald-Tribune, and it goes into the watchdog as his former life as private citizen and school district watchdog. And I will only share the last two sentences, because this is, this is in reference to what I was referencing. It says, "Unfortunately for Mr. Minor, security staff banned him from bringing the chainsaws into the meeting." (laughing). Undeterred, undeterred, Mr. Minor made his point during public comment while the buzzsaws lay on the ground outside the building. Mr. Chair, I stand corrected, and I apologize for the misstatement.
Thank you for your research.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, God.
That's it for me. And thank you to the superintendent. This is a academically improving, rapidly academically improving, and continues to be financially stable district, and thank you for the leadership.
Okay. Vice Chair Messenger.
I'll ditto what he just said about academically improving, financially sound, and also kind of talk about the public comment. You know, I, that, what I normally read was not part of the agenda that I had in front of me today, because there isn't a public comment section on this agenda, so I didn't actually have that to read.
I had to go back.
And we had to go back and look at another meeting, yeah. But to add, it, I find it incredibly difficult not to answer the questions when they're asked, because I typically can say, well, it has been published for a week, it has been there for everyone to look at every single page. Those are difficult things to not respond to, but I think, as Mr. Minor stated, I think we all try to make sure that whatever questions are brought up, do get answered during the presentations, or, or by the superintendent, or whomever else, so that anyone that comes before us does get the answers. We don't want anyone not to have an, we don't want anyone to have an unanswered question. We, we really, that's not, and I don't, at least, I, I don't think there's anyone's goal sitting up here. And that, and that, I think, is very difficult. The public comment section is always really difficult, because you want to, you want to reach out to people and answer those things, and, so, that's all I really have to say. I appreciate what you have to say, the positivity about, you know, this is, we are academically improving, and we are financially sound, and I think typically, one of the things I always hear is, well, this happened, or that happened. It's like, you know, there's always going to be, you know, those little things that we have to work on, and I think that everything that I see as a school district really ardently tries to improve and work on those things, and it has to happen in a very public way, which makes it more difficult for everyone, you know? But, like always, thanks, team. Go team. That's all I got.
Okay. Board Member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to make a few comments, because my vote has nothing to do with the quality of the budget and the work that your staff has done, because it's incredible. You know, I'd like the public to know that this budget reflects a nearly .2 mil reduction as a result of the legislature's action. So we are, you know, this budget reflects, like I said, nearly a .2 mil reduction in the tax levy, which is remarkable. The, the, what I'm going to ask, and, and we had discussions in the past, I'm going to preface this, because the superintendent and her staff, over the past year, and even the past six months, have overcome near insurmountable challenges, and this budget is light years ahead of anyone that I have seen in the past from this district. And it's deliberate, a lot of thought went into it, but with, with any organization, and I discussed this probably a couple of years ago, it's a good exercise to go through every year, especially in government. When I was in state government, the governor mandated that every agency had to prepare a budget in anticipation of a legislature cutting their budget by 10%, 20%, 30%. And, and if that occurred, what would we do without? What services couldn't be provided? What deferred maintenance couldn't be provided? And in this scenario, we have a, we've done remarkable work, we've got, you know, fantastic, you know, ratings with the, the bonding agencies, et cetera, and, and we've got revenue growth. We have growth in our, our sales tax, our optional sales tax, we have growth in our, our property values, we've got new homes that are hitting the tax rolls, we've got impact fees that are rolling in, and, and what I would like to see, we've already demonstrated what a robust we, budget we can have with a legislature reducing by .2 mils, which is out of our control, but there are a number of, of tax levies which this board has the authority, and has the capacity to determine whether or not we levy a, a, a tax at the state cap. And specifically, that is in our, our 1 mil operating tax. I think we also have flexibility in our 1 and 1/2 mil local capital improvement tax. And I think it would be a good exercise for us to, to look at, you know, talk with our financial advisors on what kind of savings can be achieved with regards to our, our current debt, and what the, the, the debt, you know, carrying costs are, if we can, you know, restructure some of that. But more importantly, as we are looking forward to a new capital improvement plan, go through an exercise and, and say, you know, what, what would our budget look like if we reduce the 1 mil by .2 mils, and make it .8, and the 1.5 capital, reduce it to 1.3 mils, and what would that budget look like? What could we not fund? We're coming off of, of three pretty strong years of incredible capital spending for new construction, and at least, we can go through that exercise and look where we would be financially, and be able to tell the public that this is what we've considered, and this is what we would be doing without. And I think it's a good exercise. Any business, whether you're in the government business or in private businesses, what, what can I do better for less? And I think it's a, it's a good exercise. I would like to know, given the revenue projections in the county, the increased impact fees that we are collecting, if we maintain our budget, and we maintain the, the reserves, or the fund balances that we're projecting, how can we adjust the tax burden on property owners? And what would be the cost to the district's operations, if any? And what would be the cost to the district with regards to, you know, maintenance, et cetera? And so I would, I would like to see, you did a great job with what the legislature did to us, and you know I'm not a fan of the legislature rolling back, you know, our, our tax levy, because I think that's wrong, but it does demonstrate, if the legislature did not roll back that tax, that we could have a very robust budget if we rolled it back ourselves. And so that's what I would like to see, and that's why I wanted to bring it up tonight, because that's not going to be a quick exercise, and I realize that. And it may be something that, you know, we look at, and, and we don't have the time to do it, and maybe we work on next year's budget process to be able to look at those scenarios of being able to adjust our tax levy commensurate with the, the, the economic growth in the community, especially when we're looking at all of these new properties hitting the tax rolls. And so that is my request and comments, Mr. Chair. But I commend the administration and the superintendent, because you've done an incredible job. This is an informative budget, it, it demonstrates financial strength. Now, another note, if we were to adjust the millage, we also need to hear from the bond rating agencies what the impact would be on bond ratings, because I'm not willing to compromise our bond ratings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Hope. Board Member Golden, sir, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would echo the considerations that Mr. Hope's would like to have raised, but I would like to have them raised in the context of the capital improvement study that we've got ongoing, because I would not want us to be pound, penny wise and pound foolish. Because the reality is that even though we've just built these three new schools, we've got 51 other schools in the, in the county, somewhere in much, much need of capitalization. So if we're going to do that, if we're going to go that exercise, let's do them both together. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I did not envy you tonight having to be in the chair with the limitations that you, that you had. I was out of order, but that was only to try to raise an issue that obviously creates problems. You can't have people coming before you and not be able to have them have us responsive to them, and yet we cannot violate our agenda. And so I'm going to ask, as it relates to our budget agendas only, that we reorder the structure of our budget agendas to allow the presentations to come with respect to the tentative budget, and even the final budget, and that before we engage in dialogue as a board, that we do hear from the public. Not necessarily to respond to them, but to at least to let them respond to what they have heard from our people. I don't know whether that requires a change in policy, or what that does in terms of procedure, but just those two meetings. I don't want to change the, the agenda order for all of our meetings, but just for the two budget meetings. Even though I am not fully convinced that everyone that came before us tonight was only concerned about the budget, but there were some that were, and rather than have them get lost, or overlooked, or shut out, or be presumed to not be important, I would raise that. And I don't, I'm not quite so sure how to get that done, but I think that that would solve a lot of problems, and it would make it easier for you to not have to not be the chair of the meeting. Because your, 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 your goal here is to be the chair. You preside, and if we don't abide by your presiding, then the people have no hope.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr.
Yes, sir.
Kind words in your comments. We accomplished a lot tonight. You know, this is significant, it's not just something, you know, to mark off that we've done what the legislature says we have to do. We do it with pride, you know, to move this district forward, and we are going places. This district academically, financial stability, getting things built, and, you know, students being educated. And it's not just bragging, you know, we have the awards, we have the data to support it. We have, you know, in the last, you know, couple of months, we've had a situation in the community that, that, you know, saddens me, and I think many people in this community, and I think it's reflected in, you know, the tenor of comments that we have, and, and people, you know, coming before us. And I, I think that everybody on this board, and, and the staff, have tried to handle it in a delicate way, and still moving forward. In terms of the order of business, it, it's just been my experience, and has on the board, and not only in this organization, with others, that, you know, keeping to protocols is critical to move forward with accomplishing the goals of the organization. And I, I praise everybody on here, on this dais, on this board, for working toward that end. The reason, you know, I'll just say it, that not disallowing a Q and A between the audience and board members is to avoid chaos. We cannot have, conduct business as a board when that occurs. It invites everybody in the audience, you know, to be part of the board discussion, and this is a meeting of the board, for the board to conduct business. We want to hear from, you know, the audience and public comments. If they have some comments, fine. If they have a question, fine. Then it should be, you know, considered, and I think it has, you know, by the board members. But when we get, it, it, any response is by the board, it's, it can't be just one board member saying something, they, one, even the chair. And so whatever might be raised, you know, from public comments, fine, I'm all for, you know, are talking about it, but we can't have, you know, one of us getting into a one-on-one discussion with somebody in the, in the meeting, or else, we're, we're not going to get business done. And then there could be arguments between board members as to responding to somebody in the audience. The responses should be by us, you know, to each other, and as long as I'm board chair, you know, that, that's. And as long as I'm board chair, you know, that, that's the way of conduct of the meeting. And I, I, I don't think, you know, the good people who come here, you know, with, with their concerns, appreciate that. Many, many of them feel hurt, not, not treated well, that sort of an expectation that they're instantly going to get an answer to their concern. It can't work that way. It will never work that way. And I, I, I'm not going to give an apology, but I hope that all of our fellow citizens out there appreciate it. And I, I think that they, they should understand that we stick to the business on the agenda. The, the matter of concerning Lincoln Memorial Academy is, is something that touches us all. This board with, with great consideration, you know, moved ahead for the children, for the teachers. We considered a very great danger, you know, to the welfare, the schooling of students. It's very seriously taken. And that's why we moved ahead with it. I think that in the days and weeks that go forward, the community will greater appreciate that what this board did, what our administration is doing, serves that interest. And now, there's many people who feel hurt by it, but I think when all is said and done, there's going to be a lot of gratitude for what the administration and this board has done, you know, to, you know, protect the welfare and health and the education of all those students and the employees that, of the academy. And that's our goal. And it's never been the goal to wipe out that middle school. It's been to protect, you know, those kids. And I, I think people are, are getting the answer, that we are very sincere and we want the school, you know, over at the, the middle school to proceed with good teachers and a good education. And I think everybody on this board is going to fight for that. So that's my comments, and I think that there's, that closes business. And thank you all for a great meeting. We are adjourned.